Well, welcome. Tonight, one of the two nights where we decide how we're going to spend the money in Milford. We being town meeting members. For anybody who does not understand, selectmen can make recommendations, school committee, all the elected officials. Then you've got the FinCom, which to me is the most influential powerless people in town hall because I think fifteen of us altogether get one vote. But the town meeting members are the critical ones because every single dollar in or out of the town has to be approved by them. So tonight, we've got twenty-nine articles. We'll put the same challenge we do every year, especially years like this year where there's not really a big controversial, there's no chicken bills, there's nothing on there that we know will garner a lot of emotion. But the challenge is what article that really is less than critical will take up the bulk of the time at town meeting? But let's start with introductions.
Thanks, Al. Mike Skiau, Finance Committee, and also town meeting member, precinct seven.
Thank you, Al. Jeff Nero, Finance Committee, town meeting member, precinct eight.
Mike Suarez, Finance Committee, precinct seven.
And I think it's important that people understand you're not a town meeting member because you're on the Finance Committee.
Correct.
You have to be elected, you have to go out and be elected. So Article One is always reports. It's where Chris Moran will get up and give us the state of the town from a financial perspective, and any other committees who've been working for the benefit of Milford get up and tell us what's going on. We roll into Article Two. Anybody want to comment on the Personnel Board article?
We had a lively meeting with the Personnel Board a couple of Finance Committee meetings ago, but I think that in last meeting that was resolved. So my understanding is right, we're just going to, we were going to pass it over, we had, no, we originally voted unfavorable. Now, my understanding is going to pass over the changes that he had recommended in the meeting.
Some of us had real issues.
The original standard process.
Where twenty-three months ago, we did a major overhaul. And we were told that this would set us up for years to come. And then all of a sudden, twenty-three months later, we want to do another. And it was confusing because we were going to withhold a step change that was promised. But then next year, it seemed like they get eight percent increase.
Compounding, it was crazy.
And you sit there and say, wait a minute, this really makes no sense because, and the issue I had is, how do I tell, well, Jeff, I like you, so I'll give you a big raise? You, I don't like. You know, you go to some of the unions and say, you've got to live with two percent. But you, I'm going to jack up again. It may be systemic. We're now a hundred and three million dollar account company, whatever you want to call it.
That was a hundred and ten, right?
Or a hundred and ten, I'm sorry, a hundred and ten million.
What happened to that seven million?
If it was up to me, we'd save it. But no, we're a hundred and ten million dollars, and we're starting to see the growing pains that this year, we're putting in first time, a human resource director. Because we need professional help so that we're not every twenty-three months coming back. And when we ask, well, how can it, well, we're ten percent below everybody. Well, how can that be in twenty-three months? Well, the old study was flawed, totally confusing.
It was totally.
But the good news is, we worked with the Personnel Board, they drew the change, and they're going to go back and study it and come back when we have enough time to really understand it.
Yeah, I think for me, I think for me, I'm relatively new to Finance Committee, this is my third time going around. And I was part of the discussion when the Personnel Board brought that study twenty-three months ago. And when they brought it forward, and I said, it was a ten percent differential, I had the same question, I said, how can it be ten percent in two years? I was totally confused with that. We hadn't seen the data, you know, some of the other members had concerns about, is that salary, is that all in? We don't know, we don't know, to us, to us, I know, to me anyway, when we look at it as a compensation, it's a compensation package. You know, so are we ten percent below on salary, are we ten percent below on the compensation package? It was way too much information to try to digest.
In twenty minutes.
In twenty minutes to approve it and an amendment to the article.
Well, you go back to basics, compensation, you know, you adjust compensation to retain and attract employees. And I don't see any mass exodus of Article Two employees, which tells me what we're paying is in line, it might not be the highest, but it's certainly not the lowest, otherwise we'd be seeing.
Otherwise, we wouldn't attract people.
We would be seeing a lot of people leaving, and we'd be having a lot of trouble attracting employees to.
Now, Article Three, the normal review of elected official salaries, and it should be noted, not all elected officials. School committee isn't going to get a two percent raise. School committee should get a fifty percent raise. Double them. They're paid zero, we can double their salary and make them feel good.
And real good.
But everybody else, from selectmen to park commissioners, sewer commissioners, looks like a standard two percent.
Across the board.
Across the board.
Right. And obviously, some of these are more like stipends, and that's what that is. But you do have a couple of real salaries in there, so, yeah.
Now, Article Four, at this point.
And we're favorable as a Finance Committee.
Yes. I don't think we really went unfavorable on any this year.
No.
I mean, it all got worked out in committee before it came to us.
Because I think what the town meeting members want us to do, to bring articles to the floor that we vetted, and they can feel good about our recommendations.
And that's always the tough thing for people to understand, because they say, okay, there's never a disagreement at town meeting. You're right, but for months, if you went to the subcommittee level, you would see the sparks. I mean, you were involved in the school last year.
Yes.
If anybody said there was no disagreement, they hadn't been to one subcommittee meeting.
Same for this year.
Absolutely. And I'm sure same for next year.
Same for next year. But in true Milford style, at the end, we come together, you know? Article Four.
So this is the overall budget. So every, we vote on every line item, and so we have, we've approved every line item, and then we do approve the budget as a whole, and that's Article Four. And so this year, we are, this is the first year we are passing one hundred million dollars on our budget. So we're at one oh three, five nine two, eight two six.
It's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money.
And that's where we're starting to see some of the growing pains. Now, one of the things we've always had comments about as town meeting members, a lot of people, is why do we go through what we used to call housekeeping? And then Jerry got upset, our barrister, and said, no, they're reoccurring. So Article Five is now trying to streamline, you know, like taking or accepting streets. At the end of the day, if they meet the zoning rules and they meet the specifications and requirements, having a vote on every street just took five, ten, twenty minutes. So Article Five looks to just streamline everything.
It lumps all those recurring articles into one standard article.
Right, and if someone has one they want to pull out, they can. The right is still there to pull it out.
And that's something that people should understand, that out of that hundred and three million dollars, I could pull out a fifty thousand dollar line item.
Or fifty million.
Or fifty million. I could pull any line item out and say, I'd like the town meeting to discuss Mike Suar's expense report. And they have the right. One of my favorite, Article Six, the potato chip money.
Kids buy the potato chips, we should go to kids' functions that are going on in the school.
And that's what it was set up for, you know? We call potato chip money, but it's all the drinks, it's all the vending machine money. And this makes it so that when we collect it, goes into the general fund, and town meeting then allocates it.
To the schools.
To the schools for student events. You know, people should know, it's not allocated to the schools just saying, oh, it's part of the overall budget. This is special money set aside to help student events. Okay, Article Seven.
Too bad this article can't be voted on before the town meetings, because it started at seven o'clock. I guess the first opportunity is next fall, we get this one passed. Which should be good.
I think it's a timely article. I mean, the town meeting had the Study Committee, you know, citizens of Milford and other people put together the committee, and they came up with the recommended start time of seven o'clock, which I think in this day and age makes sense. It makes sense.
But if you're going to the meeting, you have to be there at seven thirty.
On this particular one, correct?
You can be there at seven.
Right, exactly.
It's the next time, if you're, if this passes, if you're there at seven thirty, you've got a problem, you missed half an hour. But yeah, realistically, as the night wears on, a lot of articles don't get the due diligence they should, because people are tired. And that rolls right into Article Number Eight. And people are really confused about Article Eight, because it says that unless a vote is taken, no articles can be discussed after ten.
So this article, so this one, the last one of the next two, have to do with improving town meeting. And so again, to try to make sure that people don't get tired and just start voting yes to move things along, what they're trying to do is create a time limit. Because we had that one meeting due to no specific article whatsoever. We go well past midnight, and a lot of people left, and at some point, we didn't even have enough town meeting members for a quorum. So to try to prevent that, what they are trying to do is cap debate. So once, once your article is in and it's passed at o'clock, you can continue on that debate, but no more new articles should be presented unless there is a vote to accept that article to be brought to the floor.
We had somebody want to suspend the meeting with three articles with four left that were really automatics.
Quick.
And you sit there and say, to bring everybody back for twenty minutes? And we've had it, we're the second night, twenty-five minutes, okay, I'm so glad I came all the way down here, I would have rather stayed.
You have trouble with the quorum the second night a lot of times, especially for three articles that are like.
That are automatics?
Sure.
We're taking back money, we're moving money inside of accounts.
Well, this article, again, as Mike said, helps to contain the time, it's a reasonable seven, you know, start earlier, hopefully get done earlier, helps concise the article.
But we do have.
And you have the option to vote it longer.
Bingo.
You have the option.
If there's something there that we say, hey, it's ten o'clock, we're right.
You have four articles left.
Let's just get through it. Article Nine, how do we fill the town meeting Study Committee vacancies? I mean, realistically, that was set up so that if there is a reason that you should stay, you're right in the middle of a big project.
You stay.
You stay.
So this is going back to the original language, is that what it is?
I'm not sure what the original language, but basically, it's giving you a little bit of leeway. But again, you've got to vote on it, it's not like an automatic. That turns out that you can stay. I mean, right in the middle of a project, I need another six months, I'll stay one more term.
Yeah, I think the language for this, the article limits you to two terms, except if you're in the middle of this project that you said, this gives you the leeway to finish that project off.
Article Ten, the hallelujah article, limit how long somebody can filibuster.
It's interesting that all of, that we actually voted favorable on the Finance Committee for these and not just refer to sponsor. But I think we wanted to have our voice heard.
I think what's happened is, we had that debate about, we were referring a lot of things to sponsor, and town meeting members were saying, well, whether it's a money article or not, we know you guys do due diligence. We'd like to hear what your opinion is. So we started, you know, this year, you won't see, I mean, the first article, obviously, we're going to not have an opinion on. It's, do we read town reports? Of course. But you'll start seeing more and more the FinCom taking non-fiduciary positions just to let people know how we feel.
And to your point, and I should have talked about it earlier, this report with the FinCom notes on it that you produced, a lot of people wait till that night, or they'll read, that's what they'll read and go by it, because they'll depend on the FinCom vetting out, vetting out the articles. And to your exact point about, this is one article, not financial, but the discussion has been had around it.
Now, everybody should know that is a resident or a town meeting member, capital articles are put on the website, are put on the FinCom page. Because one of the, I'll call it a complaint, people said, well, we don't get to see the same information you all see being on the FinCom. And the more we thought about that, we said, you know, it's their money. Why wouldn't we?
Put it all up.
Pull it all up. Anybody who wants to read it, so that if I'm a town meeting member, I can scan the report, I've got at least two weeks to a month before the town meeting. You know, it starts going up a month before and goes all the way down, the things that we were presented yesterday went up today. That's the best we can do, you know, so it'll be up two weeks before the meeting. Now, Article Ten, I call it the hallelujah article, because it's going to limit how long you can talk.
See, I actually don't like this article, because the last couple of meetings, someone makes a motion to limit speakers to ten minutes, and the moderator is in charge of cutting them off. What this article does is limit them to five minutes, but if they want to speak longer, then you force a vote to allow that person. So now there's, there's all these extra votes that potentially could happen, and votes take time. So I kind of liked the way we did it the last couple of meetings, where someone just made the motion to limit debate to ten minutes, and then the moderator was in control of that.
Michael, as long as there's a limit.
Sure, yeah.
We've been through too many, and this is only my opinion, it's not FinCom, anybody's opinion. We've been through too many meetings where somebody gets up for forty-five minutes.
Talks about nothing.
Yeah.
Brings a book up and starts reading from it.
Yes. And it's like, for the love of God, be respectful. Candidly, if you can't make your point in five or ten minutes, I think you're.
You've lost the audience.
You've lost.
I agree with Mike, what Mike says, but I think this sets the stage. But if I'm getting up there, I know, this is what I have for time, I'm going to try to keep it in there, because I'm going to get voted off.
And like I say, five or ten minutes, you've got to be able to make your point and be respectful so other people. When we go to Article Eleven, we all may know or not know that the water company negotiations broke down, so now we have to go back and the DPU has to set a price, and we have to go back through all the process, and we've got to put up another three hundred thousand dollars to stay in the game.
No surprise, no surprise. And I'm sure the selectmen will talk about this at the meeting, that, you know, the DPU's not even expected to hear it until the summer.
And it doesn't lock us in.
It doesn't, that's an important point, it doesn't lock us in.
So if the.
Well, locks us into the three hundred thousand dollars.
Well, yeah. Shades of Benjamin Moore, you know? Every year, another two fifty, another, you know? We would have been better off settling in at the beginning and saving, but who knows? It's easy to look back. But you know, realistically, it's three hundred thousand dollars to see if we want to stay in the game. If I was the Milford Water Company, I'd hope Milford walks away. Because the sixty million, they could probably get eighty from some of these private companies, and then we'd pay for that. So let's just hope that the DPU gives us reasonable.
Well, it changes, it changes it, it's no longer a stock purchase, right? It's now an asset.
Which makes a huge difference in the liabilities.
Huge, right.
And see, I want an asset purchase.
Absolutely, I agree.
I don't want to inherit your liability in any way, shape, or form. If it's an asset purchase, I am buying one truck, three wrenches, two hammers, you know, whatever it is, anything that happened before that, that's with them.
And I agree with you, and my own personal opinion is, the water company will be sold, whether it's private or whether it's town in Milford, and we're going to end up paying.
Yep.
But at least we're in the front of the line.
We're in the front of it, right.
And we get.
We get right at first refusal.
First option.
The benefit of whatever that.
Article Twelve sets the money, the rates for the pay of the water company employees if they become town employees.
So last year, we voted on this article, and with the anticipation of these employees becoming town employees, now we're adjusting those salaries and wages so that if they, again, become town employees, we're ready.
A two percent cost of living, like everyone else.
Just like everyone else.
Now, Article Thirteen is the one article that was, I'll let you fill in the blanks on Article Thirteen. Anybody want to take a shot at the additional police personnel money?
I was actually a little confused by this because.
Well, I wasn't at the meeting last night, so I can't really talk from what happened.
Because I thought we put it under their Article Four budget. But this, this is calling for a second revenue source.
This one is probably one of the articles that'll demand the most discussion.
Probably.
Because you're talking about not a SWAT team, because we did participate, we do participate in the regional SWAT team. But it takes forty-five minutes. From when you ring the bell to when SWAT shows up, it takes forty-five minutes. Now, most of the tragedies at schools go between five and twenty minutes. So it's nice that SWAT team shows up with every, you know, known deterrent they have, but it's already done.
The one thing I'll say about this is, A, I watched it on the Selectmen's meeting with the chief and Sergeant Zino, and Robert Zino presented excellent presentation, and it's certainly available on Milford TV to watch it. Chief did another excellent, excellent presentation on the FinCom. And also, everything is transparent. Here's the cost of equipment, here's the life expectancy of the equipment.
Down to the best.
Down to everything. So it's all, it's all like, oh, next, we need another hundred thousand, here it is.
The killer is, how can you vote against it? You know, when you sit there and say, okay, it's crazy money. Seven hundred thousand the first year, seven something?
Close to seven hundred.
Six seventy-one.
Six seventy-one. The next year drops a hundred grand, but it's, it's a lot of money. You're talking four full-time Uber-trained officers, ton of money.
I think the point that stood out to me the most was the fact that when Tom first became our chief, we had forty-nine officers, we now have forty-five.
Sixteen years ago.
Sixteen years ago. We now have forty-five. This adds those articles, those officers back in. So it gives us the resources that we once had, and it, well, no, it increases the police presence so that they can go through this.
Here's my problem, I supported this for a different reason. Telling me what we used to have, so what? It's been sixteen years, we've done well, our police officers have done well by us. So just for the fact that, I mean, think about the computers we used to have sixteen years ago. I'm not going to go back and say, I need computers the size of my refrigerator, right? What was, was. The thing that flipped me, absolutely, because it's crazy money, this is a ton of money.
I'm surprised it's all, that's all it was, to be perfectly truthful. What's the number? What number is big enough to protect your children?
Here you go. And what I said, and it was on camera, so it's not a secret, if anything ever happened and we turned this down, how would we look at ourselves? I'm not even saying looking at Milford residents, because the guy looking back at me in the mirror, if one child ever got hurt, or one employee, and we could have stopped it with this, I don't know that I could ever forgive myself.
I agree, I'll just tell you my struggle with it, not so much with this article as much as, and I think you talked about it last night, I don't know how many years it was, certainly pre, pre me on Finance Committee, that when we had to downsize departments because we ran up against it money-wise, we're getting there money-wise, so what's going to happen? You know, what's going to happen when we run up money-wise, what happens? Either operate under your budget, and to do that, what happens? People go. What are you going to say, oh, now the task force is not necessary? That's, that's tough, right?
But see, that's why I say what was, was, you know, and you know I love Tom, he's been.
He was great.
Great. But don't tell me, when you started twenty years ago, or sixteen years ago, we had this, and now we're that. Well, the only reason we're that is that we didn't need it. I don't think anybody here would say the Milford Police Department hasn't represented us and protected us more than adequately.
Absolutely agree.
You know, and I'm one of the guys, well, I'm putting my sign back this spring, making it permanent, you know, that says, we support the Milford Police, because they support us. So to me.
Nobody drives out in your street anyway.
Well, it's only five houses. But you know, realistically, I don't know how, this puts five cops and, four cops, four cops. And we asked, the majority of their time, because they're going to be floating, town hall, all the buildings, but during the school hours, the majority of their time will be in the schools. And then we asked Tom, talk to me about overtime, because that scares me. You know, and he said, no, he is expecting no more than the normal percentage. Because I was more worried that they're going to be in school six, eight hours, then they go off and protect the buildings for three or four, and the salary budgets go off the rails.
Yeah, it was an excellent presentation, made perfect sense what he said in the schools, they learn, they learn the people, they learn the building, they learn the exits, they're big schools. They're big schools, it made sense for them, you only get familiar with it by being in them.
And that's one of the real points he made, is these four people are going to know every nook and cranny of each school. They'll be walking it, they'll be living it, so that if something happens, and it's not just terrorism, or sick people, it could be somebody got hurt, and now they can look and say, I'm at door thirty-two.
Medical emergency.
And medical emergencies, they'll know exactly where it is. So as much as it's crazy money.
Good plan.
It's a good plan. I mean, there's no way around it. Now, we had a surprise for the spring, Article Fourteen.
Yeah, school freezer.
Freezer fridge.
Yeah, so the school committee's telling us their freezer, their big freezer, this is not like, you know, your garage chest freezer, that houses all the food for the entire school system here in Milford, has been acting up, and it's nineteen.
Seventy-three.
Nineteen seventy-three freezer, so it's as old as the building.
It's number one.
Yeah, and it needs to be replaced, so.
And God bless Carla, you know, because she's there, and she's doing remediation almost daily. Because after this many years, it's a wood structure. And you know, wood shrinks and swells, so you can see the panels opening. When they open, the condensation comes in, and you get mold. And she's doing everything in the world.
To mitigate.
To mitigate the mold, but, I mean, I walked through the freezer in the fridge, and I was one of the first ones in seventy-four to walk through the freezer. Scary movie, same one. So we actually brought this forward under, I mean, for anybody who doesn't know, we don't do capital items in the spring unless it's an emergency or a special circumstance. It's going to take eight weeks to install this fridge freezer. I don't know how long, I can't remember how long it is, it's like thirty, forty feet long.
Right. This is a summer project.
This is a summer project, because you couldn't do it during the winter without totally disrupting. And I went through with Carla at the subcommittee level, could we just rent trailers? I think it's silly, but I want to know, could we do this, could we do that? And as it turns out, nothing was practical, because even during the summer, this dang freezer serves as the main repository for all the programs. Because you know, we've got twenty, thirty percent of kids on assistance. Well, just because school's out. Doesn't mean they don't have to eat. So we still have to feed them in the summer. So this just made sense, it's eighty thousand dollars, nope. But again, hopefully.
Forty, forty years, not a bad investment.
Hopefully, we'll get another forty years.
The only point that I'll make, and you made it at the subcommittee, is, it's forty years old, put it in the plan.
Yes.
You know, at some point, it needs to go, don't come to us, hey, my freezer died.
That was a screw-up, and we brought it out, saying, this should have been in the plan, because if we think there's a problem, then we want to put it in the plan and. Then we wanna put it in the plan and know that it's there, but we don't quite know that, you know, if this was in the plan for three years. Then we would've voted on it last fall for implementation this summer.
Exactly, it's visibility.
Article fifteen, Memorial Playground. Don't laugh.
Well, when is the playground more than just a playground?
Hundred forty-three thousand dollars, it better be more than a playground.
You know, and it had to do with um making the layer area under the playground structures um compliant, right? So that's why we got hit with this extra bill.
One of the the extra, for anybody who doesn't remember, we had agreed, God, two years ago.
Two years ago anyway, yeah.
That the Fincom would match dollar for dollar up to sixty grand. Cause prior to this playground, the Fincom never funded or the school committee never funded uh playgrounds. The PTOs went out and raised twenty, thirty grand and.
That's when you could get things from pressure-treated lumber and put wood chips down, that was, those were the good old days.
Thirty grand, you got a brand-new playground.
That's true.
And what we found was the playground was gonna be a hundred and twenty thou. The Memorial PTO did their best, came up with forty-five. And I remember the meeting where um we said, okay, then the playground's only ninety thousand.
Yeah.
And the school committee said, well, no, we need a hundred twenty, we said, no, no, the agreement was, we match you dollar for dollar up to sixty, cause the quote was one twenty. We said, you got two choices, kick in from your sixty million dollar budget. And that's, for anybody who's curious, the school committee talks about forty-odd million as their budget. That's their disposable, salaries, supplies.
Expenses.
Expenses. When I talk about sixty-some, the healthcare part of eight hundred employees is huge and retirees. The mortgage or the bonds we pay on.
The debt service.
The debt service. So when all is said and done, they're at over sixty-two percent, somewhere in that range of our total budget. So do Portuguese math, a hundred and three million times sixty percent, there's sixty-some million. So we sort of worked with them and said, if you want a hundred twenty thousand dollar playground, we'll kick in. Fincom will live up to their word and we'll recommend sixty thousand, you gotta come up with fifteen somewhere. And out of sixty, even forty million, they came up with it.
Right.
Then there was confusion here, cause that somehow got forgotten and we had to remind them. This article is for up to fifty thousand dollars, because another twenty-three thousand was added to make the playground ADA compliant. Cause kids in wheelchairs and all the um the previous surfaces, they would sink.
Right.
So you gotta make little ramps, but when we did the math, and we told, the subcommittee told the school, we'll be working with them to make sure. It should be twenty-three thousand out of the fifty, cause they're gonna put in sixty.
Right.
We already put in our sixty from last year, that's a hundred twenty and the quote came in at one forty-three. So barring any emergencies, we should be getting twenty-seven of this fifty back.
Right, right, so we're good with that.
Okay, Article sixteen, Michael, do you wanna vote?
We need new machines. So the, not that we ever had hanging chads, because we don't have that type of machine. But uh they are, any mechanical device has its um lifespan, so time to get new voting machines.
I don't know the age of these, but they're they've been around a long time.
They're pushing it and on top of that, every year, we pay thousands of dollars to reprogram. Cause what we see is the ballots printed, and we all know you gotta print new ballots all the time, but then the machine has to be programmed.
Read them.
To read them, and the state charges us thousands of dollars every time they do that.
Will this minimize it?
Uh theoretically, it'll minimize, if we keep using old machines, the price of programming the old ones goes up. But I think what Amy was worried about is, you can't have a machine go down in the middle of an election. Stupid thing only has to work two days, three days a year, but it's gotta work those three days. So it was time. We go to Article seventeen. Putting the HR director on the personnel board.
As you said earlier, it's time for something like this. Time, a hundred million dollar corporation, we need someone with the expertise, job descriptions, job salaries, ties right back to Article two. You know, they're gonna be a part of the personnel board, it makes perfect sense.
Article eighteen, everybody always has comments on TIF agreements. And it's always funny, because I love any TIF that comes with a new building. I'm not overly excited about a general TIF, where you promise to hire people and all, cause. But if you're gonna build a building, and in this case, Saint Gobain had a TIF, cause they expanded their plant.
Right, right, it was great, it was good for the comp- the town, good for the company.
Now that they're leaving.
Well, they're no longer Saint Gobain, unfortunately, and that's the problem, right? They were bought by an overseas company interest and decided that they didn't need to build, uh make glass bottles in Milford.
In Milford.
Yeah.
Right.
But the good news is for us, they still own the building, they still own the dirt, they still have to pay taxes and by the way. No more reduced rate.
Nope.
Now you pay full. So you know, again, if all the TIFs are structured this way, where you're literally counting on them building a new building, which adds to the tax roll. We can't lose.
No, this was a no-brainer.
Number nineteen, revolving account. This is kind of the buyback normal, that every year.
Yeah, so when um certain employees retire, um any vacation or sick time they have left over, we buy back. And this fund essentially is used to purchase uh those, that sick time and vacation time. And it, you know, depending on the year, it it um, you know, can get really close to being depleted and so this is just refunding.
We throw a hundred grand in the bucket and let them sip at it each year.
And we buy back contractually.
We have the choice.
It's not the kindness of our heart, it's contractual.
It's in the contract, and my understanding is the new contracts have less and less of the buyback. Dairy Queen, Article twenty.
Anything to keep the Dairy Queen going is good for me.
God, you remember when that used to be up at the corner? And that was the height of spring, when the Dairy Queen opened up and we could get our ice cream.
Right.
God, I'm going back.
Now it's open all the time.
Now it's open all the time, but this is all about, the area between the Dairy Queen and the border of Milford going away from Milford. Is not zoned for these type of solar panels.
Correct. And so this would allow um solar projects of a certain scale to be allowed with a special permit. So even if this article were to pass, Dairy Queen would still have to apply for the special permit and then be approved. Based on their very specific project.
This does not give them approval to go forward.
Correct.
This gives them.
The right to.
The right to apply.
For a special permit.
For a special permit and go through the process that protects Milford.
Correct. And anyone else in that zone could do the same thing.
And again, you got a family that's been in Milford, been good to Milford, not had any problems with them. You just, number one is a good idea, but you just wanna help anyway.
Well, I think that, I think to your point about the special permit, if no one understands that, it gives all the abudders the right to 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 come and talk against it if they were not far. So they, none of their rights went away with this, this is just, this is their ability to apply for a special permit.
So if all of a sudden, you see a picture and the solar panels are pointed at your kitchen. You get the right to go in and say, hey, that's not fair, you're gonna kill my value.
Right, right, right.
Article twenty-one. This has been coming for a long, long time, Middle School East.
The future of Middle School East.
So this is another zoning article change, uh this would allow fifty-five-plus housing in the area where Middle School East is right now. So the developer that purchased Middle School East wants to uh turn it into senior living. And uh they won't be able to do that unless this article passes.
And realistically, what else can you do with that building unless you're gonna tear it down?
There were a couple of ideas about it, but this is the one that won out, so.
But you think about, we're gonna put commercial in there, where you gonna park?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the important part to point out in this article, and you say it in the explanation, this is not about who bought the building, this is not about what they're gonna do. This is about changing the zoning for fifty-five and about, it's only about the zoning, the purchase price is done and we pick up our tax revenue.
And we pick up seventy-three thousand dollars of incremental tax revenue, doesn't seem like a bad thing. And by the way, for any of our six loyal viewers, the reports we're talking about is a report that the Finance Committee prepares for town meeting members. It has the articles, has the background information, and then also has the um.
Fincom position.
The Fincom rationale and their decision. It's on as of May first, it is up on the town website. So you have total access to everything we're talking, just like every Fincom member and town meeting member. Town meeting members, last week, you were sent in the mail, mine showed up, I think, a couple of days ago, the basic articles, but not the report. So don't worry that you won't be getting the report, you'll be getting it mailed this week. And that will be, it'll look just like the other report, only it'll have the extra commentary in it. Twenty-two. Balance sheet.
This is a good article, I I I'm not well versed to speak it, I mean, Zach did an excellent job explaining that that there's a special circumstance between the bond.
We have, we owe the geriatric authority countryside. We took out a bond, cause that we, they expected to spend whatever it was, it came in three hundred thousand dollars less. So we're out there and you can't cancel it.
Right.
Or you can, but then you pay a penalty. So what Zach said is, hey, look, I can use that money over here and then come next fall, when one of our other bonds is due. When that collapses, I just give them back their money. So basically, it's, okay, we're gonna hold your money for six months, then we'll make you whole when we have the opportunity.
And it was a special circumstance, because it was a similar building project, right?
Yes.
Similar amount, yeah.
Similar amount, it was a similar amount in a similar project, so what then was a building project, geriatric?
We can move the money legally without doing, you can always move it, but you pay penalties.
We had a three hundred thousand dollar need at one building, we had a three hundred thousand surplus at another.
No penalty.
And so we're just moving that, those funds around.
Article twenty-three, the insurance maximum. We have a fund similar to the buyback, where we throw a hundred grand in.
Yes.
And it protects our employees, anybody who's looked at the insurance years ago, we went to a different insurance policy. But you could get hit hard if you have a catastrophic illness. And what we said is, we're gonna take a little bit out of everybody, put it into a pool, so God forbid you should need it. But then you can dip into it to protect Milford employees. Article twenty-four, it's the collective bargaining, the new contracts coming up. We're not going to budget until we know what it is. I think it's the worst thing in the world, I'm gonna negotiate with you and Michael's gonna tell you.
How much it is?
Yeah, hey Jeff, Al's got a hundred and ten dollars, okay Jeff, I have no money, and so what number are you zoning in on? One oh nine point nine nine, you'll give me the penny out of goodwill. So this is just a way for people to say, why don't you um budget the right amount? Cause before the negotiation, you don't know what the right amount is.
Right.
And we don't wanna budget too much, cause we'll over-budget and then the incentive is to take it all.
Right.
Article twenty-five, land-taking.
So yeah, the intersection of one forty and Route sixteen is going to be um redesigned, they're going to be adding extra lanes. And part of the uh project will require a little bit of land-taking uh in and around that intersection. So this article seeks uh the funding to do that.
I don't even think it's for the funding, I think it's just the funding's already done, it's just to give them the right to do it.
Authorization.
This is gives them the authorization.
You got the right explanation, one meeting late.
Yeah, we have the funding already from last year's.
But again, town meeting has to authorize every dollar.
Right.
So we allocated the money at a previous town meeting, this is zero dollar for us today, but now it's giving the right to actually use the money. We're getting there to Article twenty-six. Le petit moi, the new Jerry Moody, but we still need the old Jerry Moody. Obviously, most people know Jerry's retired. You can't just take a hundred years of knowledge, Jerry's gonna hate me if he had a list that is, and say, okay, he's gone on Monday. Jeff, you're our new barrister, you got Tuesday and Wednesday to absorb it all.
It wants the speed.
It doesn't work.
This is the transition.
This is fifty grand that we're saying, we're gonna transition, plus, we're in the middle of this water company and we don't wanna lose Jerry's knowledge.
Right.
So, you know, to me, every dollar I pay him, I save two from the law firm, or three, you know? Snow and Ice, Article twenty-seven.
Well, this is what.
Why can't you get it right and budget the right amount?
This is what Marge got to us, right, Marge got, well, you don't ever wanna be, so people that don't know this with this account, if you budget too much. And you don't spend all of it, you lose it, it's sort of like your flexible spending.
You lose it to the free cash, but you lose the use of it for a year.
Correct.
And you can't go backwards.
Can't go backwards, so we try to keep it under what we think is.
We put half a million in, some years, eh, it's okay, most years.
No.
Like this one.
We're looking good in February.
Yeah.
And then March is.
Well, then Scabby, next year, send out the memo, there will be no snow after February fifteenth, we've used our budget.
I actually like snow, but that's beside the point.
But nine hundred fifty thousand this year, now we have to make up and pay for it.
And there it is.
And there it is, that's the snow and ice budget and everybody should know, this is the one budget that you're allowed to overspend.
The only budget, yeah.
The only budget that you can spend more than you budgeted and carry it to next year. We try not to, cause obviously, we don't wanna start with a four hundred fifty thousand dollar deficit that we gotta fund. Now, the last two articles, those are the housekeeping articles. You know, we talked about the fact that every dollar, every dollar that, you know, is a gazinda or a gazauda, has to be voted by town meeting. Now, in some cases, it's in Article twenty-seven that, no, that's the close-up, so if I budgeted five hundred thousand dollars and I got twenty-eight dollars and ten cents left. I've gotta go to town meeting and say, take back the twenty-eight dollars, put it in the general fund. So twenty-eight is a list of all the articles that essentially are done.
Right, where the projects are done and there's still money left over.
I'm sorry, the projects, not articles, we finished the project, we've closed the project, we're done with it. I mean, we've had, I loved the year we had the dollar and twenty-eight cents.
You had to vote it.
You had to vote it.
Yeah.
So what twenty-eight does, it puts together a list of all the articles, so we're not going.
One at a time.
One at a time and taking up half hour.
Right, makes sense.
Then twenty-nine.
But real quick, before it moves on, we can't use any of that cash until we vote on this. So until we vote on this article, all that money that's sitting in those projects can't fall to free cash.
Still allocated.
It's still allocated and these, some of these projects have been done for seven, eight, nine, ten years.
Zach had good a couple of years ago and went back, these are all within three years, but we had projects on there that were twelve, thirteen years old. And the money's just sitting, and some of it was silly money, thirty-two dollars, five dollars, it's just cleaning it up.
Exactly.
Now, you mentioned a word called free cash.
Two words.
Two words, okay.
A phrase, one phrase.
A phrase, free cash. First of all, nobody understands how cash is free.
Always free.
Yeah, only to some people, uh but explain to me free cash.
So uh one of the ways we get free cash is, you know, we are budgeting a hundred and three million dollars, for example, for this year. Any money that is budgeted but then not spent falls into the pool of free cash. You know, we allocated it to a certain project, there was some money left over and that, that's why it falls to free cash.
Or a budget or excess revenue.
Or excess revenue, so we have a revenue expectation as well, things like uh hotel taxes, restaurant taxes, things of that nature. And we budget a certain expectation and sometimes we get a lot more revenue than we expected, that money falls to free. And we budget a certain expectation, and sometimes we get a lot more revenue than we expected, that money falls to free cash.
Now, how do you explain to somebody that you got three million dollars in free cash? Cuz free cash, to me, is a surplus.
It is a surplus.
We either spent less than we thought, or we took in more than we expected. So, it's a surplus.
But, it's always good to be conservative and end up with a surplus, then the other way around. Because the other way around means that, you know, now we have to.
But, Michael, three million dollars?
Well, some things are reflective of a good economy, right? So, new automobiles generate excise tax, which brings in more revenue than you think you're gonna have. Or businesses in the area fill up the hotels, to Mike's point before, then you get excess revenue that you weren't expecting. So, when it's a downturn in the economy and nobody's buying any cars.
We've had years way back when it was negative free cash.
And what happens?
You know, three million dollars is nothing to sneeze at, but that's only, you know, three percent of our budget.
Bingo, that's what I was trying to get to. When you think about it, we're sitting here in the spring, trying to predict what's gonna happen over the next fifteen months. And we're gonna hit ninety-seven, some years ninety-six percent accuracy. Now, when I was in school, if I came home with a ninety-seven, that wasn't too bad. You know, I mean, when Donna tutored my daughters, if they brought her a ninety-seven on their math test.
She was happy.
She was pretty happy. But, if you think about it, if we budget ninety-seven percent accuracy, you know, we budget a hundred, we hit ninety-seven, three percent of a hundred million, it's three million bucks. My problem is, I'm scared to death to budget any tighter. You know, if we really squeeze, and you, somebody mentioned at the beginning of the show that we're starting to eat up these surpluses way too fast. You know, we don't wanna come the years that we had negative free cash. So, not a surplus, but we actually ran into a deficit. And hopefully, we'll never have to use profanity in our chambers, those words, those four-letter words called debt exclusion or two-and-a-half override. But, takes our due diligence to make sure that we don't. And, you know, it's hard to explain to people, when they say, well, why do you have three million, I said, took too much. Now, what does the FinCom do with, when you have a three-million-dollar surplus?
A lot of it gets tucked away, some of it gets returned to the taxpayer. We usually apply, it varies between year to year, but somewhere in the range of two to three million into next year's budget with the, that free cash to reduce the tax burden for next year's.
I mean, if you go under the principle that, for all the right reasons, we took too much. We ended up with three million dollars too much. If we were perfect, we would've budgeted exactly one-point-oh-oh-two million, not one point, or not a hundred-three. But, we're not perfect, we do the best we can, you end up with that surplus. The last couple of years, we've put back one-point-eight to two million dollars to the tax rate. And I don't like using the words, we gave it back. No, we took too much, we're just returning what's not ours.
Or we find projects that are right to do.
Well, but out of three, we've been putting one-point-eight back, take half the extra surplus, put it in stabilization, or, I mean, think of the fire truck. Toy, toy, one-point-one million dollars. You know, by taking some of the surplus and tucking it away, when the day came, we didn't have to borrow money, we didn't have to cut any. I mean, we only have one-point-five for capital.
For capitals, yeah.
If you take one big toy, toy, you know, even the three-hundred-eighty, four-hundred-thousand-dollar pumper trucks, boy, that's a third of your entire capital.
Or if you had to do a roof over, those are big.
And the money, and the money deserves to go back, and you said, we took too much.
It's not ours.
It deserves to go back to the.
Last article ties to the idea that you can't overspend your budget, it's against the law. So, if I'm department number two, and I got a hundred dollars to spend, years ago, the town meeting said, we're not gonna let you play games between salary and expenses. So, if you got a hundred-dollar budget, and we said sixty for salary, forty for stuff, you can't spend sixty-five unless you come back to town meeting. And that's what Article twenty-nine does, is it basically takes and transfers money inside of my department. I'm coming back to this town meeting saying, I had a lot more damage on the building, so I cut back on my temps. So, my salary number was lower. But, I overspent my materials by ten dollars. So, town meeting, I'd like your permission to take ten dollars out of my salary account and move it below the line. And that's this year's.
Every budget in town has the same guideline?
Every, every department in town has no choice.
Right. Education, too.
School is the only one that's.
No, I shouldn't say that, school can move, cuz they're an independent, but everybody that's on the town budget has that.
Because on the, on the town departments, you're essentially voting on a general expenses line, and then a personnel line, where the education budget, you're giving a, you're voting on the educational budget.
The whole thing, all-inclusive.
Yeah, and all we vote on is, if I remember right, the forty-odd million of money they have to control, cuz the other twenty million, the bonds.
Locked up in other budgets.
That's in the town budget, so that falls under, you know, woodland, we borrowed almost thirty million dollars. Okay, so we gotta pay three million this year, that's in our normal town budget. The teachers, even when they retire, their retirement is paid by the teachers' union, you know, they pay into their retirement. But, their health benefits paid by the town. You know, and that, you gotta always remember, when we say eight-hundred, people were paying for out of that department, that's new and retired. Gentlemen, any predictions on what will take the longest time to go through?
Probably the zoning amendments, is what I would guess. Zoning tends to be more spirited, and it requires a two-thirds vote.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, thank you for all the work you all did preparing this, and for coming on, talking to us. And to our six loyal viewers, thank you for going through this, it's all up on the town website, if you want the details. You can call, Chris Moran is the chairman, you can call anybody on the FinCom, and we'll be happy to walk you through any questions you have. And as always, may God bless, may tomorrow be a better night than tonight, and let's hope we never use profanity in the FinCom or the town meeting with these two-and-a-half overrides and debt exclusions that all these other towns are going through. Good night.
Thanks, Al.
Thanks, Al.